I'll do that.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Welcome to the November 9th City Council Work Session. Before we get to our In Vision Eugene part of the agenda, we are going to have a conversation about Occupy Eugene. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just mention that we have a -- if the council chooses to provide an exemption to the code on overnight camping for where Occupy Eugene is currently located at Washington-Jefferson, if you choose to do that, we've provided a motion for your consideration.
Okay. So, let's see. That would be -- who's next? Let's see. We're three down, so who would put the motion on the table? It would be...
Chris.
Chris.
I guess so.
Well, Chris. Chris and I were elected sometime.
That's right. She can do it. She's sitting in that seat.
And you can be the second.
It was previous behavior.
Okay. You want to put the motion on the table?
Sure. I move to exempt Occupy Eugene from Section 4.815's prohibition on camping for Washington-Jefferson Street Park between Sixth and Seventh Avenues. Unless extended by the council action, this exemption shall terminate on December 15th, 2011. Prior to December 15th, the city manager shall update the council on Occupy Eugene events, at which time the council can decide whether to extend the December 15th deadline. If, in the opinion of the city manager, the presence of Occupy Eugene poses an immediate or ongoing risk to public health or safety, the city manager is authorized to revoke the allowance by granting this motion.
Moved and...
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. I've got Pat in the queue. Anybody else? Chris? Anybody else? Mike?
Put me in the queue also, Mayor. This is George.
All right. Andrea, George Brown.
Alan.
Alan. Okay, let's start with Pat.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my concerns remain the same that I stated earlier. Five concerns regarding sanitation and public safety and safety of the occupants, also environmental issues, as well as private and public property rights. So, I do have a couple of questions, which I had forwarded earlier. The first one is regarding just how much is this costing to monitor and do the ongoing cost? A question regarding the cost of the police seeking, the cost of cleanup in the parks, for instance, and the cost of city staff sitting around the table, around the room right now. That's my ask. I'm happy to answer.
The chief can provide an estimate on a couple of the issues. We do not have an estimate on city staff's cost for either being in this particular meeting or taking questions from the public, so we don't have that estimate.
The best estimate for police overtime is around $20,000 to $25,000 so far.
That was a number, I think, you gave me two weeks ago, so it's not changed since then?
Two weeks ago, we knew that we had spent $15,000 in overtime for about one and a half marches, but since then, it's required much less police time, so we've been able to handle any responses to calls and proactive work there with on-duty personnel.
With on-duty personnel.
Yes.
And we also know an estimate from the Parks Department that the cost for the...
Reseding.
Reseding and all of the lawn would be approximately $10,000.
$10,000, as for the current side?
Correct.
What about the Alton Baker side?
I haven't heard that that's necessary. I don't know.
I'd heard there was significant cleanup that needed to take place after the vacation of the group.
I'll have to check with our Parks Department. I haven't heard of...
I haven't heard that, was it?
The -- so, you have no estimate regarding how much staff time is being spent on this?
We don't. It's similar to any other project that we work on. We -- staff provides a whole lot of work on a variety of things, and so we have not tracked individual staff hours against this particular project. So, for example, my time, or the people in the room at the moment.
Or the folks in the room here in this special emergency session that we have.
Right. So, it does require staff time, and people are spending time in a variety of ways in working through this.
The reason I'm asking that, so many people are asking me that question, and I want to be able to respond. And as of right now, I cannot respond to that. Ask how much time do we need from the cities?
And we'll make our best estimate. As you know, we received that request this morning, and so we're trying to put together useful information. So, we do have some information, but we don't have all information to be able to provide.
It's interesting that three of us spent time yesterday talking about funding human services and how tight the budget is on funding human services. We're looking at one time only funding probably $150,000 to $200,000. And I just wonder how quickly this has eroded any potential of human service funding, for instance, that we might be doing it in a row. It's just a large concern to me that we're spending money on impromptu, more or less out of our control situation, when we really are cutting services to people who need, who need the services. The second question that I have...
Excuse me. I just want to make sure the record is square. The city manager wouldn't know this, but we, as a matter of course, do track on-duty for some projects, on-duty hours. I don't have an estimate for you on that right now, but I didn't want you to think that that wasn't being done when it's a normal course of business for us in some cases.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. The other question that I have is regarding the use of the greenway. And I'm not real speed on the use of the greenway and the legal uses of property within the greenway. So, what is the camping regulation, or what do we do regarding people who camp in the greenway?
I'll let Glenn address that.
The Willamette Greenway runs from here to Portland. Each community has its own set of regulations that apply within the greenway, as well as some overarching state administrative rules that apply to the greenway. Since getting your question this morning, planning staff, Emily and I have tried to come up with what we can so far. There's additional research we still need to do. Here's what I can tell you at this point, and again, it's preliminary. It doesn't appear that there's any particular greenway regulation that would prohibit camping. Instead, there's another part of the code that applies to property that is zoned for public use, and in Chapter 9 of the code, that deals with camping. In addition to the part of the code that we're dealing with as part of this motion, which is in Chapter 4, the -- in order to get a permit, if you're in the greenway, in order to get a permit for a particular use, you may also need to get a greenway permit. But there aren't, as best I have been able to determine so far this morning, there aren't any particular greenway regulations that prohibit camping. Instead, there are regulations that apply to property zoned for public use that would require a permit. That permit may, because this property's in the greenway, require a greenway permit.
So, in your estimation, by passing this motion, we don't necessarily fulfill any obligation that it may have regarding protection of environmental protection of the greenway?
By passing this motion, this motion is just tied to the prohibited camping provision in Chapter 4, so it does not legally affect anything else. The greenway regulations, if one, we're going to apply for a greenway permit, there are a number of criteria that the code says you've got to meet in order to get a greenway permit. We took a quick look at those. I took a quick look at those. Those apply really, or intended to apply really, to property that is located in closer proximity to the Willamette River. A lot of those criteria deal with, okay, so how would this use affect somebody's use of the river? The property we're talking about here between Sixth and Seventh is half a mile from the river, so how those criteria would get applied if somebody actually applied for a permit for this particular area, I'm not sure.
For some reason, you know, it is inside the greenway. At some point, it was designated that this is inside the greenway.
Absolutely.
And as far as dumping in the greenway, bringing in loads of foreign material, any regulations there?
There are regulations that deal with dumping of material in parts of the greenway. I'm not aware of any regulation that deals with this particular property. Again, just haven't had time to research through all those issues.
Okay. So, from that, if I were to dump, say, a load of bark or motion, place in the greenway, nobody would have any problem with me doing that?
It would probably depend. I'm not sure whether that was a rhetorical question or not. It would probably depend on where to dump it. The fact that the property happens to be located in the greenway as it's designated on the maps may or may not be a legal issue.
Okay. Next...
I still have time, Mayor.
Actually, you'd...
Actually, I have three seconds.
It's over. I'll be glad to give you another round. Chris.
Thanks. Actually, there's so many aspects of this to talk about, I'll try to focus in on one. One that's been something that I've been thinking about, and that is, the question today is whether or not to continue the extension. The question related to that, though, is what happens after that? Do we want to just keep granting continuous extensions, or will something come of this? Can there be a benefit here? I'm willing to be patient and be helpful and try to be thoughtful if it does lead to something. So, what I would hope, my best outcome, would be if we grant the extension and say, okay, you now have a place, you're settled in, let's work on what happens next. I think if we view this as just camping for the foreseeable future, that's not really an outcome. And I'm speaking as somebody who is very involved in the delivery of human services, is very involved in trying to be compassionate and helpful for people, and just camping doesn't do that. There has to be a next step. And so, what I would want to do is to say, I'm willing to be patient if we can foresee a next step occurring. That puts us in the tremendous opportunity, as a community, to be able to help craft an effective, productive, and worthwhile next step. If we are willing, as a city, to work with the Occupy folks to say, what could that next step be? How can we move to what that next step needs to be? Because I think if it's just camping, after a while, it's going to burn out. It literally will burn out. There has to be something more there than just camping. So, what I would say, and I don't want to make it a part of the motion, but I want to be very clear that the City of Eugene should want to be able to help with human services. If it's about homelessness, I want to be able to help with that. If it's about food, I want to be able to help with that. But I don't want to help with it just by camping. I want to help with it in a way that is significant. The camping has drawn attention to a problem, but drawing attention is not solving the problem. Drawing attention is the first step to solving the problem. So, I would be willing to say, I can support this to December 15th, but before December 15th occurs, I would want the chief or the city to work with the Occupy folks to come up with what that next step is, because I would definitely be thoughtful of that before I would want to talk about the next extension. Because I can't see this just going on forever. There's got to be something next. And so, I'm willing to go with this to December 15th, but with the provision, not a formal provision, but with the sincere hope that this city would work with the Occupy folks in a constructive way to demonstrate that there can be a productive next step that can really result in a benefit and an outcome.
Thank you. Mike, you're next.
Thanks, Mayor. I continue to think that this exemption is a monumentally bad idea. I think that we're creating the opportunity for some very real health, life, and safety problems, and some environmental problems, as Pat has mentioned. I think that, you know, I saw the -- I saw a picture in one of the media. I can't remember whether it was on the website of one of the television stations or whether it was on a guard, where we're seeing several different types of disequal enforcement of the law. One of the pictures showed the stack of firewood. So, my question is, is it okay to have fires in this area and have -- because it's going to get cold, and people are going to need warmth. And so, are they going to have fires, and is that okay to have open fires in the park? Are they going to have heaters in their tents that can cause some real problems, and perhaps somebody could get hurt with, unless they have the specific right kind, in order to not create an asphyxiation problem? There's a disequal application of the law in the sense that we're creating a permanent space here, and I don't think, I mean, Alan's email earlier suggested maybe we shoot this out to January 10th. I don't think anybody believes that we have any idea about when this ends and how. So, we're creating a relatively permanent encampment. And so, as I drove by the other day, I saw several very, very large signs. So, are we exempting them from the sign code enforcement as well? Because we're getting pretty hardcore with some other folks about sign code violations, and yet, we don't seem to be worried that these huge signs out there are violating sign code. So, the disequal application of laws concerns me a great deal, but even more is if we create the opportunity for a permanent camp in this place, it looks a lot to me like we're creating Hooverville right here at the entrance to our community. So, I have some real concerns about both how we're dealing with this and what the ultimate outcome is. I don't think we're dealing with it as wisely as we should be.
Mayor, I'd just like to respond briefly to that. I think it's important to note that if the council chooses to pass this exemption, the exemption is a prohibition, or relates to camping overnight. Any other ordinance, any other law on the books, still applies.
So, if I go and...
So, if there's a violation of the sign code, we still have a responsibility to deal with that. If there's a violation of drinking in the parks, we still have to deal with that. Any other, this does not exempt the group from any other law, other than they have the ability to camp overnight.
Well, I asked Sarah about that, and I got some great help from her department folks there, and I understand I have the appropriate email for creating a complaint for the sign code enforcement, as I understand that. That's complaint-driven. So, is it the city attorney's understanding that very large, oversized signs in the park in a semi-permanent location create a violation of the sign code?
I don't know whether it's a violation of the sign code. I've been told that there has been a complaint that's already been filed. And I will be meeting with staff in the next couple of days to talk about the complaint. They will be investigating the complaint, and we will be applying the side code and enforcing things no differently than we would anywhere else in the city.
So, is it, well, I suppose the interesting question, then, is is the individual who made the sign or who hoisted the sign, or is it the group in some way has a responsibility to a fine if they refuse to take it down? That's an interesting question.
That's one of the many interesting questions we have here, because it's also property that's not owned by those individuals. It's property owned by the state, leased by the city, and so those are some of the issues that we have to work through. But we will be working through them, and the intention is to enforce the sign.
Andrea, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Good conversation. So, I will be supporting the motion. I agree with Counselor Pryor's comments around kind of getting to the crux of it, of what it is the city can do to be supportive of the mission that Occupy Eugene. I mean, if they are really concerned around the issue of, I mean, rural peace, we have no control over; corporate greed, we have no control over; homelessness, okay, let's talk about that. I want to spend the rest of my time talking a little bit about a tour that I went on out there, and I heard some comments about concerns. And actually, I've had some contacts from community members about these issues. So, as far as sanitation goes, they are paying, it's my understanding, for their own bucks. Is that correct, City Manager?
Correct. We're not paying for those.
So, and my understanding, they're going to have four, so that's good for that population. They have a temporary kitchen permit. It's my understanding through the Health Department, so that those health issues are being dealt with. They have a library. They have a little health kiosk. They are monitoring their own. It's my understanding that they've had some problems, and they called the police for backup, and they were able to mediate the situation. The gentleman, I think, ended up going, who was inebriated. So, I think that they're doing their due diligence. If anything, in my mind's eye, this is going to keep the police from being involved with some of the population that's ending up there that is usually out on the street, because they're in more of a contained environment. I mean, this environment that, in my opinion, and the way I put it, is that it's a microcosm of society. You're going to have people who are going to obey the laws, and you're going to have people who are going to break the laws. That's the way it is in my neighborhood. I'm sure that's the way it is in every neighborhood. So, I hope that, I wish them well. You know, I hope that we can come to an understanding of what it is we can do. I do want to, I'm glad to hear that there's going to be follow-up on the sign code and the open burning. I didn't see any pits, but I will talk to some folks afterwards, because that is against the law to burn in the city limits. So, I agree that, you know, they should be not, that is something they need to follow the rules on.
Okay. George Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the problems that Occupy Eugene is calling attention to took years to come to fruition, and they're discussing possible solutions. But it's kind of unrealistic to think, I mean, I, to think that they will actually come up with the solutions to all these problems immediately. So, and if they come up to a solution with even one of them, or get us on that path, that would be outstanding and maybe unrealistic to even expect that. I do like Counselor Pryor's suggestion of city dialogue with the Occupy group, and maybe that's just problems that we can address at our little, you know, microenvironment level, like homelessness. I think that would be appropriate. So, it's going to, you know, these problems aren't going to go away overnight, and this group has been peaceful and orderly and respectful of persons and property, and I'm all for, I will definitely support this motion, and will support any extensions that they ask for, as long as the status quo of, you know, being peaceful and orderly, as long as that holds, I'll just support them indefinitely, and I won't have any kind of a problem with that at all. Thank you.
Okay. Alan, you're next.
Yes, I'm going to support the motion as well, and I'm okay with the December 15th sunsetting deadline. I like to thank the city manager and the chief and the city attorney and EPD for the way that they've dealt with this issue. I think it shows very well on the city and our community. As to the Occupy Eugene folks, I just wanted to comment, I drive by the Franklin site every day since they've left, and this morning, I took an extra special look, and you cannot tell anybody was there. And in fact, the Occupy Eugene folks went back there and cleaned it up to pristine state, and I believe they did the exact same thing at Alton Baker Park. If any thing was left over, it was for the people that weren't part of the Occupy Eugene that was dealt with. So, I think they've been very clean, and I think they even, they have a sanitation committee. They even have an engineering committee. They're very, very organized there. The environmental impacts, I think, are going to be quite minimal, mostly just grass. So, they also have, and Mike, I'm encouraged by your recently found environmentalism on this issue.
Recently found.
And I hope you're encouraged to continue to support for environmental protection.
Interesting statement.
They also have a no alcohol and drugs policy there, and they've posted signs. They also have patrols that they're doing, which was of particular interest to me that I inquired about, and they're working with EPD on these issues, I know. So, I too am going to take a tour this week. So, I think they've, as Andrew said, been very organized, very peaceful, very orderly. I support what Chris was talking about. I think that's a good thing to add to this. It's an evolving thing. I think they're coalescing around ideas that would be helpful for them to move that along now that they have, now that they're not moving around all the time. That took a lot of their energy and effort. To me, this is a very unique circumstance, and it deserves a unique response. And I'm encouraged that, and the Occupy Eugene folks that are here, you need to comply with all the laws that are on the books, including the sign code. So, I encourage you to do that, and I hope you will do that. And as the city manager said, what we're doing is only exempting them from the camping ordinance, not any other ordinances. So, open pit burning and all those other things are not permitted, so. I hope that the Occupy Eugene folks continue to keep orderly and peaceful, and I support what they're doing right now.
George Pauling, did you have anything you wanted to say?
You might not have...
Perhaps not.
George Brown.
I thought George Pauling was on here. All right. Because George Pauling's out of town, and Betty Taylor's out of town as well. I'll just add, we, second round, I've got Pat and Chris.
George Brown had wanted to be in the, that was who spoke.
Did you get me in the second round?
I got George Brown already.
That was George who spoke.
Yeah.
He's Bobby.
Oh, George Brown, I mean. It's me, George.
Anyway.
Did you get me in the second round?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I wanted to let you know that I had a call from Portland, and from Seattle, and from Denver, actually asking about how we were managing our situation so well here, and wanting some understanding of how we were going about it, because we were getting the kind of results that we're getting here in managing it, both in terms of impact and costs and all kinds of other things. So, I think you, I wanted you to know that. Pat, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad you mentioned that about it, the city's looking at the way we're doing it here, because it has been exemplified fashion. I think the EPD could write a book about how to handle a situation like this. It's been remarkable. And in fact, our history as a council and as a city in working with homeless people through our camping ordinances, through the work of the Homeless Youth Committee years ago, we were prepared, we were more prepared than other cities to work in situations like this. So, I hope that's a part of the response to Denver and the other cities, that we were prepared, and we had a response. And the concerns that I have aren't just for city ordinances. I mean, we have organ-revised statutes that we have to comply with, and I wonder if there's been any discussion at the staff level regarding whatever lawsuits may come from, whether it be environmental groups or whomever, regarding our neglect of the public trust, the public pay...
I don't know if you've had any particular...
There hasn't been any issues raised, other than there was a question or two from one or two of you that I responded to. Council's approval of this motion, in my opinion, does not expose the city to any liability. You're being asked to exempt Occupy Eugene from the city code provision on prohibited camping. That's all this motion would do. That, in my opinion, does not expose the city to any liability.
And the fact that we're not, that we're more or less ignoring or circumventing whatever the state regulations may apply, or by simply passing a one ordinance, what we're saying is we're allowing camping. We're, everything else is still in violation of the law, whatever code it may be, but if we don't respond to those violations of the law, what liabilities do we expose ourselves to there?
In order to answer that question with any specificity, I'd need to know which laws you're talking about and take a look at the laws. I'm not aware of any laws that folks out there would be violating that would expose the city to any liability.
Well, I'm glad to hear that they're going to be spending $2,000 to replace the glass, and why are they paying $10,000?
Thank you.
Okay. Chris, you're next.
Thank you. As I said at a previous meeting, I really want to try to avoid making this related to a political or a partisan perspective, because I don't want to make a decision based on a political or a partisan perspective. I want to hope that whatever decision I came to or whatever position I took would have been, would be equally shared with anybody who wanted to do the same thing, and I hope that I am that way. With that said, another consideration is the notion of, what's the payoff either way? I'm really struck by the notion of the Pyrrhic Victory, which I think everybody's familiar with. The classic example of that being, we had to destroy that village in order to save it. And I know that, at least I hope, that the police department has at least a working relationship with the Occupy folks. I don't necessarily know if it's cordial, but I would hope that it's functional and it's workable, and you might give just an expression of how that relationship has been working so far.
I think we've had an exceptionally open and productive relationship with Occupy Eugene representatives that we've worked with. We have a liaison, Lieutenant Sam Kamkar, who has a good working relationship. The representatives he has worked with have complied with the requests that we've made, apart from not camping in the park, but they have made the changes that have addressed our concerns over safety and sanitation and other similar issues. So, we have a pretty good, productive, effective relationship with them right now.
I would not want to be, or appear to be, impotent in the way we approach this. We're just going to throw up our hands and turn a blind eye and not do anything. I think enforcement of important safety and sanitation issues is important. At the same time, I don't want to, at the other extreme, be draconian to the point where same time, I don't wanna, at the other extreme, be draconian to the point where, this is the law, you will obey it, or I will come down on you. Um, because I think that is the, the condition that creates a Pyrrhic Victory, where we win, but the cost was so high that we really lost. And my concern is, from watching what's happened in other communities, such as Oakland and other places, where confronting and confrontation leads to, um, damage, it leads to, uh, people getting hurt, which is a greater lawsuit than, you know, you know, I mean, what's the probability of getting sued for different kinds of things? I think somebody getting hurt is the highest likelihood of getting sued. There's additional costs for activating emergency services, SWAT teams, riot response, you know, if, if that were even needed. I'm not predicting a riot, I'm not hoping for a riot, but you can't rule that out if we get too confrontational. I think the cost to maintain a peaceful relationship is probably more reasonable than the cost to pay for a full-out confrontation. And I would hope it would never get to that point. I don't wanna test it. I don't wanna find out if that were what were going to happen. I don't wanna look like I'm turning a blind eye because I'm afraid of the cost, but I also don't wanna look like I'm spoiling for a fight just to make sure that I don't look weak. Um, it's that balance. And I look to you as our official public safety representation to guide us in terms of when you think it's getting to that point. And I don't think I've heard that we're at that point.
Thank you, Mayor. I try not to lower myself to deal with personal things at the table, 'cause I think this council's done a really good job over the course of the last couple of years of being able to disagree about stuff in a very civil way, and be able to do the city's business without the kinda ranker that we saw in years past. But Alan, I thought your comment was a little overly personal and full of more than your usual share of smug and patronizing attitude, so, um, I was really offended by that. Um, I've had a, uh, a concern and a commitment to that for a very long time, and through several years of getting up at 6:00 AM and going out with hundreds of volunteers to clean up the river, I don't remember seeing you there. So, I'd appreciate it if you didn't make this personal, but instead allowed us the opportunity to have disagreements that weren't filled with insults. Um, the, the reason that I'm going to vote no on this is the same reason I had before. I shared my concerns in the first round, but the reason that I'm voting no is because, um, the same reason that I've mentioned every time, and it's that I absolutely support these folks' right to protest, I absolutely support their right to be heard, I absolutely support, um, their right to try and, and seek redress of grievances. But you don't need to camp in order to protest and be heard. And I can't imagine why we're making a special exemption for one group and not for others. So my no vote is really around that central question. Do you need to camp to protest? And I don't believe you do. Thank you.
So, uh, we're gonna get ready to vote here. I just wanted to make a comment, that I think we've set a pretty high bar for ourselves in how we've been trying to handle this situation, and I, too, feel, um, great appreciation to both the city manager and the chief, and all our staff, and all our officers that have been involved. And I also feel a great appreciation, um, I don't know how it's gonna, uh, evolve over time. I don't know whether we'll get to those specific things that we, where we think can really make a difference in the community. I hope so. But I do think that the Occupy folks have indeed, like us, tried to set a very high bar for their behavior and how they handle what they're doing. And I think they are very aspirational for try, and honestly, I think what their, what their intention is, is to do things that will make our community better. So it's a tough, um, it's a tough goal, and I can't predict how successful, but I think the goal is there, the aspiration is there, and people have really been working hard, um, on all, all of us as a community. So, um, with that, I think we're ready to vote on the motion. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three. George Brown?
Yes, I vote yes.
Okay, four. In favor, in opposition? Two in opposition. It passes. Thank you. Thank you all.
Mayor, I'm gonna have to leave, leave, I'm gonna have to sign off.
Thank you for being here, George.
Envision Eugene part.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you so much.
Now we're switching gears. Moving from our challenge of the moment to our envisioning of the future. Envision Eugene. The manager.
Thanks, Mayor, and, uh, we actually have a lot of material, and so, um, we'll try to get as much today as we can to include conversations and questions. If we need to carry some of it over, we will then schedule a, another work session very soon, 'cause we do wanna get through the information. So Lisa, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, we are handing out a couple pieces of, uh, for you. One is a correction to the public land need summary that was included as an attachment in your packet. The other is a memo that we had, said we'd get to you based on comments we heard in the September twenty-eighth work session, and some of the data questions that came up. So, um, those are coming around to you right now. So, um, I'm not gonna take any more time for, uh, comments other than to say that, uh, we do have a lot to talk about today. We're gonna start talking about public land need with Carolyn, and Heather's gonna talk a little bit more about the single-family land. Depending on how, and then we'll give you as much time as you need for questions. If we still have time then, we're gonna go and talk a little bit about expansion. If not, we'll come back as soon as we can schedule that. So, I'll turn it over to Carolyn.
Is that not working?
Whoops.
Hello. So, um, as Lisa said, I'm gonna start off the presentation today talking to you about what our public land need is. And when I talk about public land, I, I mean, um, things like, um, schools, parks, institutional uses maybe related to the University of Oregon, and infrastructure. Um, so, uh, then I'll hand it over to Heather, who will talk about single-family. You've seen this diagram before, but just a reminder of where we are in the Envision Eugene process. We're currently in the strategy refinement phase, where we are identifying what our land need is for these different components. And, uh, we're, we're, we hope to be wrapping this up soon and moving into the next phase, which is implementation. Um, of course, want to remind you of what our seven pillars of Envision Eugene are. We would be remiss if we did that. Um, and these, of course, are, um, contained within our, our draft Envision Eugene proposal, and they are the really community values that we're basing much of this work on. So, um, when we talk about public land need, there's two categories. Uh, the first category are those, uh, uses that actually are location-specific and require a specific urban growth boundary expansion to accommodate those uses. There's three of those uses, and I will walk you through those. And then the next category are those public uses that are actually planned to occur inside our urban growth boundary. We may not know necessarily where at this point in time, but they will probably occur on land that will displace another use. So for instance, if we have, um, a park that we, um, buy and build, and it's on single-family housing land, then we need to account for that displacement. And so we'll, we'll show you how we are accounting for that, uh, as we go. Uh, so first off, I'm gonna talk about that first category, those uses that do require an expansion. There are three of them. They total about three hundred and twenty-two acres. And, um, as you can see, there's Bethel School District and Golden Gardens, kind of over in the, uh, Bethel area to the west. And then we have Santa Clara Community Park, um, up in the River Road, Santa Clara area. And I will introduce you to each one of these sites. So this first site is, um, Bethel School District, and, uh, the school district has owned this site for a number of years. It is adjacent to the urban growth boundary. You can see that the boundary there to the south. It's also just to the south of Clear Lake Road. Uh, this is an area that they purchased because they are anticipating increased enrollment in that school district over the next twenty years. And so this is, um, a school site for the future. Uh, this is actually adjacent to the site we were just looking at. This is Golden Gardens Park. This is a two hundred and twenty-three acre park site, and the reason that we would be bringing this into the urban growth boundary is to be able to provide an urban level of park service for this area. If it was just a natural area, we could leave it as it is. But as we want to be able to provide things like restrooms and maybe more full-service park amenities, uh, it would need to be brought into the urban growth boundary. And then there is also Santa Clara Community Park. This is a nineteen, nineteen acres that we do currently own, just to the north of Madison Middle School. And, um, this, again, we would need to bring in, in order to bring up to those urban levels.
Why not the full forty?
This is all that we, for Santa Clara?
We, we have it budgeted and planned as a forty-acre community park. Why not the full forty?
Well, um, this is all that we own at this time, and so it would be speculative to, to identify which area, which lots might be acquired. So at this point in time, it's just, we're just keeping it to the acres that we currently own.
But as we purchase them, they could be brought into the UGB. Is that correct?
Yeah, through a process.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Through a whole separate process.
Yes, it would require.
For the seventh pillar.
Where is that on the map? The forty?
Which one?
The forty.
It goes around to the right like this, and curves around to the right-hand side and towards the east down.
That field.
Yes.
It's outside the picture, but if you look at it on this one, you can see it right here.
I can flip back.
It's the, the large chunk that's open is Madison Middle School. The other properties that are potentially identified travel to the east and into the south around Madison's property.
So, um, moving on, um, just wanted to talk to you about that second category of public uses, those lands that are planned to occur inside the existing urban growth boundary. And there's about two hundred and ten acres total of those. And again, those two hundred and ten acres would displace, uh, uses that have a different purpose planned for them. So of those two hundred and ten acres, a hundred and fifty-four acres are planned for parks. Fifteen acres are planned for either, um, infrastructure facilities or for, uh, University of Oregon, um, planned acquisitions. Uh, there would be a remaining forty-one acres that need to be accounted for, but they are not, they will not impact the single-family land need. So you'll see the first two numbers, those, um, kinda dark circles, you'll see those carried forward into our single-family land need, and you'll see that remaining forty-one acres, um, uh, later on in, in future presentations. So with that, I will turn it over to Heather to talk about single-family housing.
Good afternoon. Heather O'Donnell with the City of Eugene Planning Division. I'm gonna be talking about, um, our capacity inside the existing urban growth boundary, and then what our remaining land need is after we determine what our capacity is. So you've seen this graphic before. Essentially, for the next twenty years, we're planning for, um, all of our land needs, and today we're focusing on our single-family housing land need. Once we determine what our housing mix is, that will tell us how many of the fifteen thousand new homes that are expected for the next twenty years will be single-family homes. So that's that top bar. Then we look at how much capacity there is for those homes inside the urban growth boundary on our existing single-family lands, and those are those four land categories at the bottom. Vacant land, capacity on our partially vacant land, capacity through redevelopment, and a capacity through land use efficiency strategies. And I'll go through each of these, um, give you updated numbers on our capacity in those. And then whatever is left over, we need to find new single-family land for. And that can be through redesignation of land, so, um, redesignating property to be for, plan it for single-family housing rather than whatever it's planned for right now, or through a UGB expansion, or some combination of the two. So, the first category of land we're gonna talk about is vacant land. How much capacity is on our existing vacant land? This map shows, um, in the colors, our vacant land by plan designation. And the yellow that is not so bright up there, um, yellowish-green is our low-density residential land. The majority of our single-family housing happens on our low-density residential land, and what we've found is about forty-three hundred additional homes can be provided through our vacant land, additional single-family homes. Um, what I want to note here is that, um, when we start talking, we get to the part of the presentation where we're talking about partially vacant land, um, we will talk a little bit about the methodology that we used for determining how much capacity is on that land. We wanna use that same methodology to update how much capacity there is on our vacant land. Um, so, we will be rerunning our capacity on our vacant land according to the new partially vacant methodology. So this number's gonna change a little bit. So, uh, speaking of partially vacant land, um, the next thing that, uh, the state statutes require us to look at is our developed land. Land that has some sort of development on it, but might have additional capacity for homes on it. Um, there's two different categories we have up there. Partially vacant land, so those, through our work with the Technical Resource Group, have been identified as larger lots that have some amount of room for capacity on them for additional homes, um, while not impacting or not removing the existing, uh, dwelling on the property. Redevelopment would be the other developed land category. Um, the Technical Resource Group worked on this issue and determined that redevelopable lands are really smaller lands, less than an acre, um, and that what that means is that there's some of those smaller properties that have room for additional housing, but it might require modification or removal of the existing dwelling on the property. So I'm gonna go through both of those. So as you know, um, the Technical Resource Group looked lot by lot at every lot over an acre in size, an acre or larger in size, um, that is partially vacant, and put each of those lots into different land categories, and then determined how much density would be, um, accounted to each of those different categories of land. So, lots that are over nine-hundred-foot elevation and sloped lots, those received less density assumed on those properties than lots that were flatter. Um, so what that gives you up there is our, um, our final numbers essentially, and they are rounded on how much capacity we think we have on those lots. And it equals about twenty, two thousand three hundred and seventy additional units. And again, that's potential capacity. What I wanna spend a little bit more time talking about is the three, um, categories of lots that you see below. Those are lots that are wastewater-constrained. Um, those are particularly in the Willow Creek area. They're currently unserved. There's capacity there for three hundred and thirty additional dwelling units. Um, lots that are transportation-constrained, there's capacity in some of those lots for about a hundred and seventy additional dwelling units. Um, those, the capacity in those lots is not included in that twenty-three hundred estimate. The reason being is that the Technical Resource Group felt that if there currently isn't, if the services to those areas currently doesn't support the densities that we could see there, we shouldn't count them until we've planned for those areas to be served accordingly to support those densities. And so at the moment, we are not including the capacity in those areas as part of the capacity in our partially vacant land. As part of what we adopt through Envision Eugene, we do need to make sure that our public facilities plans and our transportation plans support the densities that we're assuming. So we will be looking at those plans and determining if we need to update them in order to account those, um, the capacity in those lots.
Can, can you explain transportation-constrained?
Sure. There was, um... There was, thought that there are some areas in the City of Eugene, and we worked with our public work staff to help identify those areas, where the transportation facilities wouldn't support the amount, what's that?
Roads?
Yes, right. The roads would not submit, are not built to support the potential densities that we could see there in the future.
So following up on that, we, then I'll call you, Mike. We could make, given that information, we could make a decision that an area would be developed and we would invest in the infrastructure to make it work for us, right? I mean, that is part of the way we can use this information.
Right. For transportation, there's a number of different avenues. You can look at increasing your facility, your roads, the capacity of your roads in the area. You can look at, is the level of service that's being provided in that area the right level of service, or should it be lower or higher? So there's a number of, we can look at alternative transportation options and increasing those.
And that's Willow Creek area?
Willow Creek is specifically in reference to the wastewater constrained. Transportation is some other areas throughout this city.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. You have done a, the committee too, and all volunteers have done a great job going through the partially vacant lands with a fine-tooth comb in terms of constraints and other study. Are you going to apply these same level of potential constraints and the same level of fine-tooth comb analysis to vacant lands?
Yes. That's what I was trying to, obviously not clearly point out earlier, is that right now, our capacity we're assuming on vacant land is about 4,300. But now that we have these density assumptions ironed out, we want to go back and apply those to our vacant land. So yes.
Okay, thanks.
Alan?
And so to get a sense of the magnitude of this, this is 170 lots of transportation development units, in the transportation constrained, out of how many in the partially vacant and how many overall?
Well, what those are showing is not 170 lots. Those are 170 additional homes that could be accommodated on the lots that are transportation constrained.
Dwelling units.
Dwelling units, right. And so what you're looking at is an additional 500 dwelling units that would be in addition to the 2,300 there.
And how many do we need overall?
How many do we need?
Dwelling units.
Yeah, oh, 8,200 under a 55-45 mix. But we'll get four, for a single family. But at the end of the presentation, I show what the need is under each mix.
All right, so the party, let you proceed.
Okay. So then I wanted to point out the stormwater constrained box. As you can see, there's no dwelling units identified in that particular category. The purpose of this, we talked about stormwater constraints with the Technical Resource Group. The capacity that we are assuming already takes out land that is determined not buildable because it's protected by our current regulations. But we know that there are some new stormwater, a new stormwater regulations work plan that's coming up in the next couple of years, as well as area planning out in River Road, Santa Clara, where that, those two work plans may result in additional regulations or planning that would reduce, related to stormwater, that would reduce the capacity on lands potentially in River Road, Santa Clara, or elsewhere in this city. And so we want to make it really clear that we, as those projects are going on, we will need to come back and make sure we understand how that does or doesn't affect our buildable lands inventory. So this is more a flag for future consideration, but we wanted to make sure that was out there. So the next developed property that we're looking at is redevelopable land. As we talked about, the Technical Resource Group found those to be smaller lots. They're under an acre in size. And what we looked at was how many additional single-family homes have we seen created in the past on small lots, lots under an acre? And what we found was, we saw about 231 additional homes created in eight years. If we assume that that rate continues into the future, then we would see about 600 additional homes created on lots under an acre. And that equates to about 30 homes a year. So it's a relatively small amount, and the group felt that we have enough remaining supply that it's reasonable to assume that that rate would continue. So efficiency strategies. We've talked to you about this a little bit before. What these are, ways that we can change our land use codes or our programs in order to get more single-family housing than we see under current land use codes and programs. So the two that are recommended for our single-family housing are promoting secondary dwelling units. Those are accessory building, accessory dwellings. They're already allowed in the code, but we think with permitting incentives, we could see a bump in those over the next 20 years. And then allowing lots to be created off of alleys in limited circumstances in single-family areas. Both of those efficiency strategies are consistent with the Envision Eugene document by invoking or continuing the ICA infill compatibility standards recommendations, by removing barriers to small housing, and providing, helping to increase our housing choice and our overall housing supply. That being said, we're not anticipating a huge amount of these that we would see in the next 20 years. These would equate to only 160 additional single-family homes in 20 years. So what does that mean as far as what our remaining need is? If we use a 55-45 mix, that means out of the 15,000 new homes or dwelling units we need for the next 20 years, 8,200 of those would be single-family. Or we would plan for 8,200 of them to be single-family. What we just went through is our capacity on our existing single-family lands. And we found that we have about, we have capacity for about 7,400 or 7,430 of those single-family homes. The remaining need then, again, this is under a 55-45 mix, is about 770 single-family homes that we need to find new single-family land for. And the options there are through recreating new single-family land inside the urban growth boundary through redesignation, or through an urban growth boundary expansion, or through some combination of the two. So I'm going to talk about redesignation.
Mayor, could you put me in the queue for questions later if we're not taking them now?
Do you want to pause for a minute, take a second questions?
Sure.
I'm interested with that slide, we keep presenting the 55-45 mix as if that's a norm, or as if that's an average, based on some of the information that we've got to. And I see staff kind of presenting that with what I would call an overly heavy emphasis before we've really gotten there. I have a number of questions around that number, and how we got there, and whether that's the appropriate number for us. So I'm wondering why we keep being presented with that as if we've made that decision.
I can weigh in a little bit. There'll be a slide here that will show the same information for a variety of mixes. The 55-45 mix is the recommendation you'll see coming from me as a final recommendation. So that's why it's just happened to be plugged into here. The council has not made a decision on the, on the mix, and you'll, and it'll be your decision to make.
My concern is with the presentation of materials. We saw, for example, a graphic in a previous presentation that showed where other communities in the area are moving. And I wanted us to have a chance to really dissect that before we get to this. And I, it's my understanding from a couple of different people that we may have even seen some different information, say, than the Planning Commission received with regard to that, or different, more fuller information. And so I, this may be an inappropriate time for us to go through that, but I want to have a fuller discussion about that if time permits.
I could just add two quick pieces to that. One is, one of the pieces of information that we handed out just before our presentation does address some of the questions that we heard about housing mix. And so we'll give you some time to review that, and then we can discuss that further. And I've heard a couple people mention some inconsistencies between Planning Commission and City Council presentations that I wanted to clarify. And that is when we first took this, went to the Planning Commission, our understanding was that there were a couple communities in Oregon that were actually planning for more single-family homes in the future. Once we dug into that a little deeper, we found out that actually that wasn't true, that they're planning for more. So we had an error in the Planning Commission presentation that we then corrected when we brought to you. And we can go into that in more detail later too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think we'll have time to look at that in more detail, because I sure expect so, because 55 certainly hasn't been finalized by this council yet. My question was regarding the 7,430 units with the existing capacity. Is that maximum density on the units, or is that some kind of mix on the units?
Yeah. So what we typically use, for instance, when you look at the 4,300 for vacant land, that is based on the historic densities that we've seen, average densities from 2001 to 2008, applied to all of our vacant land. But we will need to go back and revise our vacant land capacity based on the partially vacant land capacity, which did adjust the densities down in some areas. Those areas being properties that were over 900-foot in elevation, and basically properties in the South Hills, or those areas that are over 5% slope. And so instead of it being an averaged, it was, the densities were lowered.
Okay. And then, so the numbers, 8,200 units, so the 770 units needed, that's based on 55, so we'd pop up if we were 60, 65. And we'll receive that information clearly either later in this presentation or sometimes subsequent to today.
You'll see some of that today.
Thank you very much.
Alan?
My question, I had the same question Pat had, but an additional one was the redesignation. So that means redesignation of other code, or other zoning to single-family. For instance, what, commercial or multifamily designations?
Yes, so we're just about to go into that. But essentially, it's, we're, right now, we're focusing on some areas that are designated medium-density residential, and looking at the potential of redesignating those to single-family or low-density.
Medium meaning R2.
What's that?
Medium density.
Right, which translates into R2 zoning.
So we want to move on, but one more quick question.
Yeah, two further points I didn't make there. First one, we recognize and we know that the City of Eugene doesn't exist in a vacuum, and we already do that in a number of other departments. When we talk about public safety, we talk about the integrated system with Eugene and Springfield and Lane County, because criminals don't just work in one, they deal across boundaries. And I've asked before, can we have a regional analysis of this? Because I think our efforts here affect other communities. And so, for example, I would at least like to know what the single-family housing mix through time is in Vanita, Elmira, Coburg, Harrisburg, Crestwell, Cottage Grove, and our surrounding smaller communities, and how our decisions over the last 10 or 20 years have affected what's going on there, so that we're making an appropriate decision that's balanced with a more regional look, number one. And number two would be, we don't seem to be taking what I would think would be a reasonable market analysis of this. We're not looking at information that may give us better clues as to the reality of what everyone actually wants to do who moves here. And by that, I mean, I believe there are some studies from local real estate firms who will tell you that by and large, all of the folks who come into our community looking to find a place to live, of them, at least 70% are looking for single-family development, or single-family dwelling units. So are we going to be able to have some kind of market-driven information that helps us make a wiser decision, and a more fuller decision at the end of the process?
So I want to answer your first question first. In front of you, you should have a response to your questions from the September 28th word.
The one we were just handed?
Yes.
Okay.
You were just handed that, fresh off the press. And so what's in there is an analysis or gathering of data that we asked Echo Northwest to do in response to your question about what's going on in the other surrounding smaller jurisdictions.
And did they use census data or market data over time?
They used census data, as well as building permit data. I'm not sure what you mean about market.
We had, Echo Northwest used a mix of data.
Yes.
In my opinion, inconsistently, when they did some previous analysis for us. And so I'm wondering what they did in this particular case.
It's, I think the, the data is all footnoted as to where it comes from. So it'd probably be best if we give you time to review that, and then we can come back and discuss further.
Thanks.
Okay, I think we're ready to segue on.
Great. So the thing that I want to point out here before we move on is that this is preliminary information. We just talked a little bit here about how we're going to go back and update our vacant land capacity. And we're going to talk a little bit now about redesignation, because that impacts what our remaining need would be. This graphic here just gives you a visual, a different way of looking at a visual representation of how our need for the next 20 years is accommodated. And what you can see is that most of the capacity is in our vacant and our partially vacant land. So as far as redesignation goes, we identified potential opportunities throughout the city to study for whether or not it makes sense to redesignate these areas from one use that they're currently planned for but not developed as, to another use being, in this case, single-family housing. We looked at particularly some medium-density residential areas. When I say that, I mean they're areas planned for medium-density residential that are on the outer edges of town. Those areas, excuse me, if they were to be redesignated to single-family, would provide more single-family land inside the existing urban growth boundary. That would actually be closer to services that we already have. And in addition, it would be consistent with the idea of one of our strategies in Envision Eugene, which is providing more density in our downtown core and along our key transit corridors and core commercial areas. But we also need to look at what impact that has on the fact that currently, since those are medium-density residential areas, they're planned for that, so we're assuming that they would develop that way. And so if you displace those multifamily homes with single-family, you need to figure out where those, where we're going to plan for those to go, which would be along our corridors and in downtown. So we sent letters out to some of these areas. We asked folks just to gauge their interest on whether or not they were interested in redesignating to low-density residential. We took that information to our Planning Commission, and the guidance we got from them was to continue conversations with the folks that are actually interested in it, and not continue the conversation, or not pursue the folks that are not interested in redesignation. So what you see up here are the two medium-density residential areas that we are continuing conversations on right now. One is in North Eugene, near Delta Highway and Ayers Road, and the other one is in West Eugene, near West 11th and Crow Road. What this map shows you, and the Planning Commission saw this as well, is two property owners in North Eugene, again, we're at Delta Highway and Ayers Road. The two properties outlined in black are two property owners that have said, yes, they are interested. That's the green check there. If those were to be redesignated to low-density, then we would see about 80 additional single-family homes for potential there. And then in West Eugene, the entire city area is outlined in black. The darker checks, which are green, are the property owners that said they are interested. The yellow checks, which are pretty hard to see there, are the property owners that said they might be interested in redesignation. The red checks are the property owners that said they were not interested. And then the properties that don't have a check on them are folks we haven't heard from. If the majority of this area was redesignated to single-family, not all of it, because obviously we have some folks that are not interested, and again, some, you know, look we have some folks that are not interested and again, some, you know, looking at land use patterns, it may not make sense to re-designate the whole area. We could see about 950 dwelling units that there's potential for there.
Is that bright green West lawn?
So we've updated this graphic to show you, depending on the redesignation, which is shown in the lower right-hand corner, if you get anywhere from 80 additional units to about 1,000 additional units, that affects what your remaining land needs. So it's up to about 690 dwelling units. So the purpose of this slide is to show you what that means from an acreage standpoint. If you look at the upper left-hand corner, you take that up to 690 dwelling units from the last slide, then that translates into about 160, up to 164 acres of land that's needed for single-family housing. But as Carolyn mentioned earlier, there are some non-residential uses that happen on single-family land. They basically displace housing that would otherwise happen there. Those are neighborhood commercial, neighborhood parks and other kind of public facilities. So when you add all that together, what you get is a need for about 134 to 360 acres of urban growth boundary expansion. And again, that's under a 55-45 mix. But as you mentioned earlier, what does this mean under other housing mixes? We anticipated that question. So.
But you can't read it.
So although you can't read the answer to that question, no. The Technical Resource Group has been working diligently on preparing a spreadsheet that helps show if you plug in different assumptions, like a different housing mix, what is your resulting land need. And so that helps us put together this table, which shows what the resulting land need is under different housing mixes. And that's basically the bottom line there. So this is a preliminary estimate. A couple of things I want to remind you about is that we're going to update our vacant land capacity with the new density assumptions that we're using in partially vacant. That may reduce the capacity on our vacant land. We'll need to determine whether or not we can include the transportation and wastewater-constrained lots, the capacity on those, which would increase our capacity. And then finally, we need to determine how, we need to finalize how much land, how many property owners are interested in redesignation because that would provide more single-family land inside their urban growth boundary.
So I just want to mention, we do have a.
Conference locked.
We do have an open house scheduled for next Monday from 4 to 6, I believe, the 14th.
Just broadcasting the entire Phoenix area.
The 14th? Okay, this is the 21st. We had, also scheduled a public hearing with the council that I think, given the fact that we're going to need to come back and talk to you about the expansion, that we're also going to push that out to make sure there's enough time between when we introduce that material and then when there's an opportunity for the public to comment on that. So with that, we'll go ahead and answer questions.
All right. Mike, you have a question?
I do. Well, actually, it's more of a statement than a question, I suppose, but I appreciate all the work. You guys have been working on this long and hard for a good, long while and there's a lot of data here and I appreciate all your efforts very much. I know I may sound critical or I may have a lot of, you know, pointed questions, but I really do appreciate the work that you're doing. My chief concern is that as a policy question, we address housing affordability with subsidized housing predominantly. I mean, we look at it and say, we have, and we've had council meetings where we talk about, we have a real housing affordability gap, we have a housing, affordable housing shortage and affordable housing problem in our community. And I would agree with that. But when everyone who works in the industries around housing seems to suggest that we need more land than our studies are suggesting we need, my concern is this. We had a much bigger housing affordability problem in, through the mid-2000s and up till about '09 or so. And in the last couple of years, property values and home values have gone down a bit in the last two years. So while we still have this affordability problem we're talking about, we're actually having it in the context of lower-valued property and lower-valued homes. And my concern is that if we don't analyze this appropriately to the marketplace as well and end up constraining ourselves with the amount of land we're willing to add to this or to the capacity for us to grow, that we may be falsely altering the market in a way that will see land values and housing prices go much higher than is been the case in the last several years and will explode our affordable housing problem. So I don't know, and our only solutions to that seems to be to increase the amount of subsidized housing we're doing. And it's a policy concern to me that we're not doing a better job of trying to create a market environment in our community where you can build affordable housing for everybody.
And I, can I just, real quick, I think that's a, it's actually a foundation or a crux of what I think would be a great discussion because what I'm trying to do in the recommendation is, as we mentioned before, be aggressive but reasonable and not artificially constrain the market. And I think part of that is, is I think a lot of reasonable people can make a very logical argument on, probably in any of those mixes of housing. And so I do think that is the, eventually the council will have to have a good policy discussion around, based on all the information you see, you'll eventually come out in a place. And that's what we've done, is listened to lots of information, read a lot and have looked at all of that and said, okay, based on all that, here's where I think it lands. But other people will come up with reasonable arguments, very much so, and come in a different place. So I think it's a, it'll be a good discussion for the council.
Alan?
Could you go back three slides? My question's about these little circles here on the side and how they, how that integrates into this whole process. I was a little unclear about how the commercial uses and residential, the parks and the additional public uses, all that plays into this calculus.
So I'll take a stab at what I think you're asking, which is, are you asking why we're accounting for it or?
Why and how.
Why now?
Why and how.
Okay. So we're required to account for any way that our, all of the uses that our lands are used for. And so just like single-family land has some neighborhood commercial that happens, multifamily land also has some public uses that, you know, public facilities that might happen on it. Commercial land also might have some public facilities. So we have to go through each of our different basic land use categories, residential land, commercial land and industrial land, and make sure we're accounting for all the other uses that don't seem to fall into those categories but happen on those lands. We need to make sure we're providing enough land for those to continue to happen. We want to see neighborhood commercial happen in single-family areas. We want to see neighborhood parks happen. But as a result of those happening, they take up land that would otherwise be used for housing. And so that's what, that's trying to account for, is that when we're, when we're looking at how much single-family land actually needs to be provided, it's not just for housing, it's also for these other uses that happen there.
Right, so Mike brought this up a couple of meetings ago, that when we have residential areas, we want mixed use in that area so there's commercial. And so that's how that commercial mixed-use area gets accounted for. So we take it out of the residential and?
Yeah, and so when we get to talking about commercial, you'll also see that some residential happens in commercial. And so we'll be accounting for the residential dwellings, typically multifamily, that happens in commercial. So you'll see that.
Oh, like, for instance, mixed use.
Yeah.
Where you have resident, or residential over commercial.
Right, right.
So you get, so that plays both places.
Yep, yep.
Okay. At least it's not complicated.
So in all the conferences that I've gone to recently, one of the things they talk about is that our past experience is, is our past experience and we're in a different time now. And you can't use that as readily as we have done in previous looks. And that all across the country, including the West Coast, the amount of multifamily dwellings have gone up and up and up and are expected to continue to do so. And the amount of single-family dwellings have gone down. And all the demographics information points to even more of that occurring, not only for boomers, but for young families and young entrepreneurs that are part of the scene right now. So that, to me, sort of maybe balances out some of the other discussion about what we can expect built on our past experience. We have a past experience and that's what we've typically used, but we have a new experience that is driving big changes throughout this whole country and we're part of that as well. So, an interesting discussion. Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm looking at Slide 20, which is Single Family Housing Efficiency Strategies. Looking at promoting secondary dwelling units and allowing alley access lots. It seems to me that in the past, we've more or less, well, in some circumstances, discouraged additional units on plans. It's good to see us moving in the direction where people can place additional dwelling units on existing properties, granny flats, I guess is what some people call them. And I see a lot of that in the University District in particular, where it's done to accommodate students. But along with what Alan was just talking about, using residential land for commercial land and vice versa, do we actually encourage residential land in commercially zoned properties? Is that something that we are either incenting or incentivizing or actually encouraging? Are you thinking that?
Yeah, we will, we are, actually, this is very ripe with the Technical Resource Group right now. They're just now getting into our commercial land need and our multifamily, how much multifamily will happen on commercial land in our corridors and downtown. So we will be looking at that. Already, I think there are some incentives to allow that to happen. Our code allows that to happen and we're looking at removing barriers to make it easier to do that type of development.
Does that extend to industrial land in any fashion?
I think, no, not in the sense of residential and commercial happening. For industrial, what we've heard more discussion about is making sure that our industrial areas and the plan designations and zoning accompany that are more flexible, to be consistent with the ever-changing business models that keep happening, but not really that you would be allowing residential in like heavy industrial or anything like that.
You know, Mayor, you and others around this table have done a lot of work to try to promote low-income housing, entry-level housing in places for people to live who otherwise may not have a place to live. And this seems that we're going in the right direction as far as allowing multiple uses to include residential into, or residential potential in industrial land, just to provide some of the lower, lower-cost housing that we are definitely have a dearth of in this community. Thank you very much.
Alan and then Chris.
Same slide, Slide 20. If I had this right, what it says is, can you bring that up? It says that, that the, Slide 20, the single-family housing ones.
Oops.
It says that there'll be, secondary dwelling units be 100 total in the 20-year period?
100 additional. We already see 10, about 10 on average per year. So this would be, if we do these permitting incentives, we would see a bump of about 100 more in 20 years.
So we've got, so we've got 10 a year.
Right.
And this would add another.
Hundred.
Five.
Right, right, oh yeah, right.
Okay. And then same with the alley access. So this would be, how many do we have of that a year?
We, it's currently not allowed in low-density residential, so we see none of those a year. So this would be 60 more in 20 years. It was previously allowed in the code, though. I do want to clarify, but it's not right now.
Pat mentioned in the university area, this has been happening. And in some areas, it's fine. In other areas where it's a single-family neighborhood, it smashes up against Pillar 5, which is the protecting neighborhoods and livability pillar. And if, if you end up with some of the dwellings that people have been building, which is five bedrooms and five students in an alley access, that doesn't necessarily enhance the livability of everybody around in that neighborhood. In fact, the people who live in that neighborhood probably would think that was a, decreases livability, but it does increase our density. And so there's a, there's a push and a pull there that we have to be very careful about, especially in established, single-family neighborhoods because it starts to, especially around the university area, it starts to change the character and nature of those neighborhoods where you end up getting dwellings with, with five unrelated people, which is allowable under the code, and cramming in every nook and cranny, five more unrelated young folks or students, changes the character of the neighborhood. And we've seen that occur in the West University neighborhood in spades, to the point where we have 99% rent or occupancy in that area. And so I think that's a policy that we really need to focus on, make sure we get that one right. Especially how it relates to the Pillar 5 livability and neighborhood protection one, especially around the university, because I think that's unique, doesn't really happen too much in other parts of the city.
And if I can clarify really quickly, I probably didn't say that very well as I was going through these pretty quickly, but these will be done or coordinated in conjunction with the infill compatibility standards process. So we will definitely, on both of these fronts, be looking at compatibility standards.
We're down to the wire here, folks. We have Chris and Mike and Andrea.
Thanks. I'll try to go quickly. I appreciate all the work you're doing and we are pushing you to try to arrive at a single number. And that's very difficult because you're talking about predicting the future. And when you're predicting the future and yet you have to come up with a single number, that's taking an enormous risk. Some of us here have indicated our support for the notion of scenario planning. That gives you more flexibility, but scenario planning is really not geared towards this system where the state and other requirements are telling you to come up with a single number. That doesn't accommodate the scenario. But something you could do, which would be helpful for me, is the degree to which you could highlight in the work you're doing, those conclusions you're reaching, which could serve more than one scenario. And just one example is, when you look at the upper range on a 60-40, I mean, the lower range on a 60-40 and the upper range on the 55-45, they overlap. And that's, that's something where you'd say, you, it's not to the point of having your cake and eating it too, but it does say, there is a range within which 60-40 and 55-45, as scenarios, actually have some elements in common. I'd be interested in knowing where else are there aspects where different possible futures have elements in common? Because in good scenario planning, that's what you, that's why you have different scenarios, to look for the common elements that could apply in any one of those scenarios. That's what, those are the things you really want to look at. And I think there may be a number of those areas where we could say, in any of two or three different possible growth scenarios, somewhere in here might be something that could serve us very well. I might be willing to look at an acreage recommendation that says, yeah, granted, it's at the upper range of this one, but it's also within the lower range of that one. And you might be able to have greater flexibility by looking at that number. I'm trying to give you flexibility, but flexibility where you still have to come up with a single number. And it's tough. And I envy your, your great work you've done so far.